So that there is still a title that we will receive something there. And we'll know that closer to the end of fiscal year in May. So that's just something to keep in the back of your head. But there are potential opportunities to split fiscal years without really being using the project over the fiscal years.
Yeah, I just would like to say, I don't know how many of you have zoomed into an active meeting, but it's very difficult here. You can't, no one sees who your face, who the faces are. And I'd have to do it, I'm just exhausted by the end of it. So I, my understanding was these pillars had something to do with the way we had to set things up. So please, when you're thinking about changing things, think about that. Consider that, that the people at home that are tuning in, residents, to be much more inviting if we got all this fixed. So that's all I'd like to say.
Sure, and to that point, when we first moved in, the goal was to get it set up quickly.
Exactly.
So this is how we could start using it.
Right, right.
I think the goal is, once we have kind of a more permanent setup, we would have a better system.
Right, well, I wasn't complaining because it does function when we're sitting in here, but it doesn't happen so well on my conference, so that's all.
One other thing I'll add, one of the questions was alternatives. A contractor has said that a whole load available for 30 more days, or later, if it doesn't impact a sequencing event. So they won't evaporate if you execute the contract for some period of time, which gives you a little ability to think about things. And in that time, that's what we would do on exhaustive value engineering with the contractor. Once they buy out the project and know who their individual subtrades are, then we could really leverage in the conversation. Right now, it's kind of just, without any commitment, he can't really give you a part exact dollar where to come from.
And if the ultimate goal is to reduce the total cost of the project, and at the same time, potentially sacrifice certain improvements, I included in the memo, things that I would probably look at, in addition to any adds or deductions, would potentially be the ADA accessible ramp into Section C, and potentially the meeting room wall in Section A. So I think we could still, you know, set up a meeting room table, but it would just be a more open meeting room.
I think, I think that when you look at the bids, we've got five bidders, and some of those names are bidders that we recognize here in the community. Two of them at least are local, I don't show them all, but... The spread from the low base bid to the high base bid is over $260,000, almost $270,000. It's like more than 30% of the, 30% of the low bid. The second bidder is $75,000 over the third bid. I didn't sort of do it yet. I think there's a lot done, it's on the list that needs to be done. To, we just talked about accessible, the part one to make the whole building accessible with that ramp. You get the elevator done, and then over there, to get that set up, where we want to operate as a city. You know, when I read this memo that Justin put together, what he's telling us is, okay, yeah, we, you know, we bonded for a limited amount, and we have $817,000 that we always left. The price we're being asked to think about is $980,000. But we have many, many ways to fill that gap without impacting this year's budget, next year's budget, or anything that we're thinking about doing. Because of the, well, you could repeat the people already. There's options, but we don't have to choose those options today. The only thing we're being asked is whether we want to go forward with the project. And I think this is really important, I think we need to get them started. They want to start, we didn't talk about the timeline, but I see it's topped up here on the screen. You know, if we approve this tonight, we're talking about work beginning, or I'm thinking about beginning in March, right?
Two weeks from today.
You know, which is, which is incredible. I think that's what we want. That's what I want, I want, I want to go for this and, you know, the pending action will be, you know, the reality is, the way the construction business works, they're going to do the work, then they're going to ask to get paid. Some of this is going to follow this fiscal year, and some of it's going to follow after July 1. There's going to be a request. So as we get to the end of this fiscal year, and either that stabilization money comes in, or doesn't, we still have options, we can figure out how to pay for the other $163,000, or this year or next year. It had all the flexibility in the world, they had someone getting that.
If, if, for those who can't read it, are we able to read off the timeline?
Yeah, so, so the idea is that some action would be taken today, whether it be to receive this, a decision to follow, or receive this recommendation and take action to authorize the other intent, which would get the contractor the ability to start getting the ball rolling with contractors. But we allow the fact that, you know, it may be some time needed. So we said council approval and contract execution would happen within the next two weeks, ending on Friday and Sunday fifth, with some kind of indication to the contractor, so they can get the ball rolling. That's the direction we're going. And then on that Monday, 28th, we would start to see the process of construction start, which is kickoff meeting, establish communication protocols, processes with the contractor, with the city, with us. And then they would do the same thing with their subcontractors, which will get a flow of information coming from us for approval, which is the shop drilling process. So, and that takes a fair amount of time where it looks like nothing's happening, but it's where all the detail is happening. And that period would be three weeks or so, but they would probably start doing selected demolitions quickly thereafter, or as soon as permits were in hand. Probably that, there would be an ongoing owners' meeting every two weeks. We would be on site every week, just kind of observing and inspecting, but we would have an owners' meeting with the contractor, owner's representation, as well as us, engineering occasionally, to look at progress and authorize payments on a monthly basis, based on what has been completed and approved. And then that kind of concluding somewhere in the middle of July with substantial completion, which will be the point in which the construction is complete enough, approved enough, for you to occupy for the intended function of the building. There's probably going to be loose ends thereafter into the end of the month, punchless kind of items, with the final payment request probably being in August or September. It'll be a pretty robust process. It's a small project, the rapid arms around, of course, you get this thing on script if possible, which will be good for all of us.
One more thing I'd like to add, one more thing about this, if we cut some of these minors, we'll never come back and fix them in my opinion. We just will not come back in here and rip everything up for a minor project. So I really am in favor of doing it well, and doing it well the first time. That's a second opinion to that. Maybe more than my limit, I apologize.
Because I don't have the numbers here, I would tell me, what contingencies baked into that number?
There is a contingency that the contractor carries that is with his own number. I don't know what that is, but there was a number they used. For owner contingencies, I'd recommend about 10%.
Is that baked into this, or that'd be 10% extra?
Just be in addition to this.
So an extra $100,000, basically?
I would be comfortable with that, and be comfortable saying we didn't have something left over to add to that. And I say that because we did a pretty exhaustive evaluation of this building. There are things we don't know, because we didn't do destructive testing, for the most part. There's going to be costs, the costs happen three ways. One, architects have boo-boos, engineer boo-boos. Contractor missed something, we have to argue about it. Or there's unforeseen something that pops up, we all have to figure out how to handle it. And then there's always the owner would like to do something differently than what's been designed bid. Those are the reasons that changes occur generally. And we're going to encounter all of them, I'm sure. Typically, our projects, we see something around a percent and a half of things that looks like, oh my gosh, why did we do that? A percent and a half, not 10. But in average, it's around 5% to 7% change orders for projects for all three items, which is contractor unforeseen conditions, architect engineering issues, and owner adds to the project. That's just an average. It could be less, like I say, our general number is around 1.5%.
Especially our time when you open up 80-year-old buildings, things happen. So I just want folks to be clear that it's, it's actually an extra, slightly an extra $100,000 that we would anticipate spending on this. So we're $263,000 short, which is more than our middle. I will say, the fourth option there, taking money from the sewer stabilization fund that absolutely affects future activities, because our sewer replacement maintenance is anticipated on TAP funds, and we don't have a lot of more places that are going to be getting TAPS, at least not to sustain that. Is it clear that we are able to use the ARCA funds for this? My understanding is that it was very limited to infrastructure things unless we're in Madison community.
If it was, recently, they issued changes that opened it up. And I believe it's anything under $10 million, it's basically no question to ask.
All right, I'm done. I would at least be in favor of moving the ramp there. It seems simple, but if you look, you take a step back there, there's steps going down the basement. That makes it more complex than just a platform.
So we have a, are you done with your presentation?
I am, I'm happy to answer these questions.
We have a motion by Fisher and a second sidewalk to approve a bit of work for City Hall and elevator in one package, Jackson Construction for Mount Mount Duxie, $980,000. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, and maybe I don't have it as I'm speaking out loud, just sort of any contingency you might perceive on my part when it comes to this topic. You know, I've been in council for a little over a year. I, there's a lot about this topic and other topics that predate me, just by definition. I think what I struggle with here is that, in my mind, this isn't the number one priority in the city of where I do live and to spend big dollars. To me, in my mind, it's dealing with the fire station, and as best as I can tell, based on that 2015 Partners in Architecture report, there's a lot, there are a lot of infrastructure improvements that were known to council a long time ago. And as best as I can tell, you know, efforts to expedite or kind of find money where we could find money, were not similarly made in that discussion. I wasn't part of that discussion, so maybe that's not an accurate characterization of that, and I know that blending these discussions has caused problems in the past, but I do want people to understand why I'm hesitant about it. In the same way, if, you know, I was speaking with my husband about improvements for our house, that sort of a thing. And I thought there was one priority, and he thought there was another priority, and suddenly, it just felt like we were up on the racetrack to do the thing that I didn't think was a priority, I maybe wouldn't feel great about it. Even if I can maybe understand why the time worked out that way. I understand we were dealing with the opportunity that presented itself, that was out of our control when this building became available. I just want to let you know, I'm struggling with it, it's a large dollar now. It's a lot more than I had the sense of when there was an agreement to purchase this. I get the points of, if we don't do it all now, when are we going to do it? I'm also, you know, I'd also generally like to spread around the money we have a little bit to the, to various needs, especially when it seems like we have multiple needs that are high priority. So I don't know, it's not anything that's necessarily to persuade you or to sway you. I just want to go on record saying what my personal struggle is with this topic in general.
Clear comments? Okay, Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the bit of work of the City Hall improvements and elevator package to Axum Construction for Mount Mount Duxie, $980,000.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Michelle's?
No.
Avra?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to two, so you'll communicate, Justin, Neil, David, to Axum?
Yes, we'll do it.
Project execution, sir. Let us know, please, do it. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and for helping to see you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Speak in high too, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Five saving.
Yeah, thank you remote.
Okay, this is item M2. It's the consideration of construction engineering proposal for Second Street Water Main and sidewalk project for Mount Mount Duxie, $98,500. Cousins? Thank you. In a second?
One second.
Did that, that, thank you.
Or anybody else?
No, I appreciate it. Hey, Justin, over you?
Sure, so, a couple meetings ago, City Council approved the proposal from Concord to do the Second Street Water Main and sidewalk project. The idea is that this work would take place, take place this spring, and be completed before July 1st of 2022. This is the associated proposal that we typically see on road and water main projects from our engineer, OHM advisors. This work is to provide construction oversight and onsite engineering from OHM to make sure that this work takes place, gets completed well and on time. Patrick Rose with OHM is on Zoom, and if Patrick has anything that he would like to add, I'd be given the opportunity to do that.
Oh, there we go.
Welcome, Patrick.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to chat about this item for this evening. As Justin mentioned, really, this is kind of our typical construction services proposal. We also have included in here materials testing to make sure, I know it was a discussion item earlier about touchback fill, some of the stuff that's been found on Hudson, and Tim was accurate in saying that the standards are much more defined at this point. But that's one of the things that would be included in this as well, is make sure materials are meeting specifications. Also, of course, with that is, you know, updates and keeping the residents up to speed on what's going on out there.
So I, to build on that, I believe we're planning another onsite resident meeting. We held one last fall. I think we got to, got the opportunity to speak with most residents in the impacted area. We also had staff that went door-to-door to do interior inspections to check for galvanized pipes and the type of sewer leads that connect to Second Street. The idea is that we hold another onsite meeting with residents this spring before final project kickoff, just to make sure that everybody understands the timing and how everything is going to, is going to work out.
Questions for Justin or Patrick?
Love those neighborhood meetings, that works, it really does. My neighbors were thrilled about the rain, just thrilled.
Yeah, and honestly, I think we, we can attribute those onsite meetings to how successful the Extracrossing project was. There were people, you know, that, probably had 20, 30 people show up and listen to Patrick and OHM and our staff talk about the process and how, what things they would see at each stage of the process. And I think really cut down on, on calls and questions.
Glad we do that. Glad you could listen.
Any other further questions? Pam, if you'd call the vote to approve the construction proposal for Mount Mount Duxie, $98,500, please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Avra?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Okay, new motion carries. This is item M3, is discussion of road intersections. Prior tasks three and four, but more specifically Fifth and Dover and Dexter and Arbor Road and Meadowview.
So I know in the last work session, the last goals and objectives work session, we had folks that expressed interest in bringing this back for, for further discussion. So I wanted to bring this back for that opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for doing that. So a bit of task three, the traffic signal timing at Dexter and Arbor Road at Meadowview, kind of covered in sort of our precursor conversation about removing this factor in section. So I think why I wanted to talk about this more is, I was generally in agreement that I did not want to move forward with the proposed actions that we saw on that agenda, because it seemed like the evidence we had at that time did not support moving forward with those specific remedies, I guess if we call them. But I wanted to have sort of a broader conversation about what, if at all, do these concerns say, do these concerns say anything more generally about traffic control, traffic patterns in the city? Are they exemplary of a more general traffic control concern that is something that would be under council's purview to try to remedy? So the first ones, it seems to be more related to traffic caused by going to and from the schools. And we talked last time, I think Mayor Keel mentioned the impact of the school's bus routes and the limited availability of them, or how many they have, and how that impacts the number of parents who are driving their kids to school. It doesn't seem to me that's something, you know, City Council can do anything about. I, I will keep in mind that when residents bring that concern up to me, I can encourage them to reach out, reach out to the schools. Their concerns are about school traffic, to reach out to schools, and that thing. If others have thoughts about them, I'm happy to hear them. As it relates sort of to Fifth and Dover, I am interested in having a conversation about general traffic as it disperses off of Ann Arbor Street to get through to that north, you know, north direction, to get to Central or, you know, to get out to Buxter Towne Check, that sort of a thing. And so I guess the concerns I heard seem to reflect that, you know, those streets are sort of being used as a cut through to get in that direction. And, you know, I guess the reality is, when you have a street, I suppose, that's there to be driven on. I just didn't know what people thought about, you know, are we okay with residents in that area? You know, that being used as a cut through, that is then, you know, people who are maybe in a hurry, or they're, you know, not stopping at the stop signs, or they're speeding. And I think way back when I said, I think enforcement might be the best first step, and so I think we're hoping to hear from the lieutenant at some point, and I'd be curious to know, but what if that enforcement can help address those concerns more immediately? Zach on multiple occasions has talked about different design elements. I mean, certain of them we're stuck with, you know, how far the houses are off the street, and just how huge the streets look. And I think I mentioned when I was driving through Ann Arbor, you know, not long ago, you drive on those streets, and it really feels like you have to go 25 miles an hour, because there's so much happening right next to you. On our streets, it feels like, you know, it's wide open. I even feel that way coming into Dexter and Arbor Road, as you're sort of heading out of downtown, and you're coming up on La Cienega, it's just like, you know, well, technically it's 50. Anyway, so Zach has mentioned design elements. I think to me, at one point, he mentioned there are these, like, urban, I don't know if they're...
I actually have that up on my phone here.
So maybe, yeah, he can speak to that, but are there, you know, and again, I think enforcement might be the better way, and maybe that's the least expensive way, and not like we spend money where we don't need to spend money. So I'm curious to know what people think about that. Is there something that needs to be, do people perceive that there's a problem? Are they hearing from residents that there's a problem? Have they lived there, do they think there's a problem? And, yeah, is there something that we should, when it comes to traffic, just dealing with traffic volumes and, yeah, it could be...
Yeah, the, the, immediately when I looked at this, and I, this is probably for Patrick, Patrick, it's Donna. On Fifth and Dover, where people are coming off of Dexter and Arbor, if they all have to stop, do you have any concerns about the stacking? That they will end up with their tail end out onto Dexter and Arbor? That was something I could think of, how will that work? And I'm sure you've looked at it, but I can't figure it out on my own. Does that make any sense? No?
You, I think the question was about stacking?
Yeah, the car stacking, if everybody's, all four ways are stopping, and people are using that to come off Dexter and Arbor, cut through, as been said several times. With everybody stopping, is there enough stacking space between that other and Ann Arbor Street?
I mean, I think from what we've seen, at least on these sections, there's, even during the peak, peak periods, the volumes aren't particularly high. And so I think at that intersection in particular, it's not as big of a concern.
But maybe not a lot of people are not using it.
Yeah, no, I think people are using it, but I definitely understand the question relative to, you know, the fact that there's, there's posted speeds, and then what people feel comfortable driving. And to, to, I think, Jamie, and an exact point, you know, the, the relatively wide open roads, you know, those don't have curb and gutter for the most part. You know, there's open shoulders, so they do feel, you know, pretty, pretty wide and open. So that does affect the speeds, and I know we, we talked about that on Central Street when we, when we did that design a couple of years ago. You know, on one hand, it was great, because we put bike lanes in, but the, the, I guess the negative about that was that we were also adding five foot on the other side of the road. So it, it actually kind of made it feel a little more open than it even was before the road got rebuilt. So there's, there's things that can be done. The good thing about Fifth Street, for instance, is it's not a, a major street. So, you know, we can, there's a possibility to become more creative if we need to with, you know, other kind of interventions, I'll call them, with regard to geometrics.
Donna, Dan also raised his hand after your comments. Dan, did you want to say something?
I love it, unfortunately. It's one of the pastors. We have a stop sign at Dover and Fourth. I had to call the police a couple of years ago. I think enforcement, I mean, they were just driving to the stop sign. And they sat at the parish office, and they could have wrote tickets. I mean, they were there for a long time, and it seemed to, you know, slow them down. So I don't know if the stop sign is the end-all in this. I think enforcement, like you were saying, would be a cheaper way to go. And I know it worked, because I was sitting in my front porch watching it, and it's, and the speeds can get pretty good, you know, between Dover and, what's that?
Shoot down that door, right.
So the stop sign you think would work, but they just ran them.
Yeah.
So I think enforcement, I watched enforcement work in front of them.
Yeah.
Not that curb and gutter, bike lanes, and there's not other things we can do, but that would probably be the cheapest ever.
Yeah, I'm going to throw the most out-of-the-box option there. If we could get some context for those truckers who just got kicked out of Windsor, maybe pay them, you know, 10, 15 bucks to park at these intersections at certain times of the day. One thing I'd like to hear is if we could find out, for example, how much it would cost for us to put the green paint on the bicycle lanes on Central? That helps change the perception of how narrow the roads are. And that's kind of become universal color bicycle lanes. So I'm going to look to our friends in West and Chelsea. They've had a project, this coming year will be their third year with the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study. It's called Chelsea Pop. Here's a quick little description from their first year. So the city of Chelsea Pop was launched on a tactical urbanism demonstration project along Freer Road, Railroad Street, McKinley and Dewey Street corridor in 2020. The Chelsea Pop project was a low-cost 30-day demonstration project to test out traffic calming treatments that increase comfort and safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. Meeting engaging was used to help identify treatments Meeting engaging was used to help identify treatments using the project, which included enhanced crosswalks, bike lanes, shared road markings, painted curb extensions, strike painting, and wayfinding signs. Um, so it was meant to be kind of a quick thirty day test and see if this affects patterns. Um, I was actually going to be contacting Suzanne, flowers of Watts who led that project and lives just south of us on the way to the high school about, uh, if they'd be able to provide something like that for us as well. Um, so it's, it's a nice way, so for example, the, um, the, the curb paint extensions. So on Central Street, we have really wide radiuses for turns. I can do thirty miles an hour in my car, allegedly, um, because it's five miles higher than the speed limit. And so like, what the curb extension does is you add paint out there. So it looks like the curb's out farther. It's not out farther, you can still run over and all that stuff, but it's that perception thing. Um, so I think a lot of the issues we've addressed are, it's difficult to address engineering wise, and once we, we decide to do a change, it, it can be costly and something like this is a bit quicker and easier to test a lot of different things. And this is Zach just, just, um, so we are aware, Suzanne did still longer with, uh, Watts. Uh-huh, well, I won't be bothering her.
Hey Zach, just to give an idea, um, we did that, um, green paint project in place on Main Street. And it's just under ten dollars a square foot.
Okay.
It was like, it was like nine something, if I remember right. But round figures, ten dollars a square foot. When you, you think about like a lane between twelve or thirteen, two, I, twelve, eleven, whatever it is there.
Probably five for a bicycle.
Well, okay, sometimes you put it out into the, the lane where it didn't have traffic, so you're right, just five foot width would be five. But the length of it would do or it'd end up. I didn't mean to break the train of thought, that was what we did.
No, no, just as I was thinking about the traffic, I want to make sure that her horns are the same.
I think that's an interesting idea. I would be curious to learn more about, no, the Chelsea, uh, uh, thing, I just pulled it up. They actually have some interesting, sort of a bike wave, uh, and it's like a physical, like wave, almost like metal looking wave that delineates for the bike lanes uh, from traffic that looks like they're going to be testing in on North Freer Road in spring of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, so I guess that would be coming up, so something we could drive over there and take a look at. Anyway, if you're curious to learn more, I don't, I don't know how those, um, initiatives happen. Uh, I think it's an interesting idea and it, like, if they're saying low pass, I'd be curious to know how low pass, but again, I do appreciate, uh, Dan's comment about, uh, enforcement, and I think that's definitely a first line of defense or action that I'd be interested in taking, but that's interesting. I remember seeing those signs along, I guess, the, the tail on the Dexter Chelsea Road, when you get into Chelsea, whatever that means, sort of remember seeing those signs and I think know what that was about.
So, you know, the, um, not that the schools necessarily have money to spend, I don't know, not that I'm trying to spend their money, but the, the, the the issue that I remember talking about is the cars are stacked up on Dexter and Arbor Road, right? So as a result of the fact that they're stacked up both on eastbound, down the hill and past the billboard. So that backs traffic up because it's only one lane there. And then the ones coming off of westbound can't turn on the left turn lane because cars coming from eastbound are taking it, right? So to me, to me, the only way to solve that would be if the school widened the driveway on their property. You could extend the turn lane in the other railway back further. They have more stacking allowed to get over to the right, you know, allow more cars to go through to alleviate the, the congestion coming from town that way. There are some things that I think could be done, but they have to be covered with. And some of them have to go on their property, I would say. Just throwing those out there.
Like if they had a dedicated lane, this is, this is the lane for the left turn, people are going to the right.
And there'd be a total education there too, because you'd have to get people, you know, to do it up on the light screen, right? But you know what happens is the light turns red and then
Yeah.
People that are allowed to make the right turn keep going and ones that are coming to the left.
We could make every kid write a bus.
Well, I, I've joked with friends on the, the board, what if they charged like ten dollars for a driving pass? That'd probably cut down on the number, plus they'd have a bunch of extra money.
Okay, other thoughts on these two topics? So the, the study that was done on just, on Dover, except did not form the stop signs on, sure, you saw that, right? Okay. I hadn't remembered that is what we already did.
Yeah, yes.
Are we okay to move on from this discussion?
I think so, yeah, I mean, and it, yeah, and the next step is the survey. So I need to double check if we had, you know, questions about people and like, if they had intersections of concern or, you know, traffic areas of concern, that that could potentially disrupt any future if we wanted to pursue this um, pop initiative, Watts thing. Um, I, I'd be interested in gathering feedback on what do they see as trouble spots and that could help focus any potential future action. So thanks for being able to answer.
So then? Yeah, just, just on the Chelsea pop thing, I, I brought it up also. Um, I would be concerned about, um,
For the thing?
About what?
Oh, yeah. Probably, probably something like that. So something like paint on, on the ground for bicycles, it's, it's a lot different than something physical. And if we have that conversation, I want to know how, what they're doing, both them and also actually Ann Arbor with all their new uh, little lanes or, um, you know, when it comes to snow plowing.
So, so if, if I'm not mistaken, the Chelsea pop items are intended to be temporary. Um, and I will say that most of the traffic enforcement calls that we did get are during the spring and summer. So if they're temporary and they're temporary during the spring and summer, then we don't have to worry about snow plowing as much. Uh, before we wrap this up, I would, I would support us getting another one or several of the radar signs on through the community.
Yeah, those seem effective, I agree.
Dexter Crossing. Would you use a twelve thousand dollars?
I, in, in that range, I believe. I, I, I had looked it up, I had.
And, and Ann Arbor is, is clearing the smell from those two-way white lines that you mentioned. They are trying to keep those open, but, you know, it's, it's, it's got the same, um, effectiveness as, you know, what we do around here. When it's cold and the water starts to bleed out and ice turns, there's not a lot of people riding the bikes on because it's slippery. So there's a lot of hidden, hidden spill spots.
The radar signs work fine. Um, I'm here all the time. We need more enforcement. I'm telling you, all the way across the city. And I hate to give the police any more words, I know they're busy. But enforcement works. Radar signs work, but if you get pulled over and you get a ticket or you're lucky enough to get a warning, it's on Shore and Forest Street. They didn't give all tickets when I was sitting down by my front porch, it does slow them down. It really does. But the radar signs work. I mean, it, it works on Broad Street, I see it all the time going down the wastewater point, including myself, twenty-six, twenty-seven, when you don't realize that, but you see that sign and it does slow them down.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say one last thing on that. So to the point of enforcement, as fast as I can tell, it looks like there's a rate of ticketing on ten percent of the stops from the monthly police reports we've seen that, you know, this money, you know, pullovers and it seems like they're only going to take ten percent of the tax. So who knows if, I, I don't know if that industry standard to only get all that money tickets and, you know, is there the potential that they don't actually have to do more work, I mean, they just have to write more tickets, so they make the same number of stops and they write more tickets, is that more effective? So that's a question I have for the lieutenant.
Yeah, I have a question about that too, actually, because, um, like, is that, that's not broken down by what people are getting pulled over for, right? Because I'd be curious, like, you know, some of that could be, like, one time I was driving down Main Street and I didn't have my headlights on because it would, you know, the street lights were on and I got pulled over and then I got a warning. I was like, holy crap, my headlights aren't on, what the heck, you know, but I wasn't speeding.
Yeah.
So I'd be curious to get a breakdown of, of that.
I think sometimes they have, we have to, sometimes it's the narrative that goes with why they were pulled over. But not, I suppose with changing itself with each other when you're reporting perhaps.
Depends on your age too.
I mean, I'm not saying I shouldn't have gotten the ticket, I should, I should have been driving with my headlights on, but.
I just wanted to play.
Yeah.
Got it.
I'm going to bump down to M four, uh, discussion of the committee survey. Justin, I'll turn this over to you and thank you for your good work putting, putting this together.
Sure, so, um, we took a, we took a crack at addressing some questions. Um, these are by no means supposed to be the final questions and, um, we tried to cover a broad range of topics, um, with the idea being that we give city council the opportunity to go through, um, make changes wherever you'd like to make changes, add questions wherever you'd like to add questions, delete, delete questions and I would really heartburn, you know, please delete, delete questions because, uh, fifty questions is going to be a lot for, for folks to, to want to sit through. Um, but, um, yeah, so we, we prepared a, a list of fifty draft, draft rough questions. Um, and wanted to get city council's feedback on what you thought, uh, the appropriate questions and inappropriate questions, good topics, bad topics. Et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, for something easy, I'm generally in favor of asking demographics at the end of a survey, just because I think it's more engaging to a resident to have something more substantive upfront. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or students with that, or if there's a reason you've led with demographics.
Um, there, there wasn't really any logic behind leaving demographics other than, uh, previous surveys that we had done, uh, led demographics. And they're also just generally easier to write than
Yeah.
than other types of questions.
Do you want comments from here from us? Can you take these home with you? Yeah, there's, yeah, there's even on two, it says, I selected the city of Dexter, just in terms of the instructions. If you selected one of the other choices, please skip ahead, skip to the next question, you keep stuff on there if you selected one of the other choices. Because it doesn't, it wasn't clear to me at first that this question referred to question number one. So if you, uh, I don't know, if you answered question, yeah, whatever, just something gives a little more stir to it.
Yeah, there, 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 there are some, there's, uh, some logic that would go into these questions.
Yeah.
Um, as, as far as like, um, uh, programming logic, so, so when you just select the answer, it'll take you to a question other than maybe natural next question. Um, and so there, there's, there, there is some of that built into this.
Um, yeah. So in that case, so if you could program skip logic such that if somebody answered, I, you know, I live in the city of Dexter, that they'll automatically go to the current number two, in which case you could change the question step to just say, um, how long have you lived in the city of Dexter? And then the second one would be, you know, it's go back to question one, if they answered, I live in the four, we just put outside the city or I live outside the four, then they would skip question two. So in theory, then if you change the question wording to question two, I suppose. And if we talked about this earlier, to not require any, to not require responses to any particular questions, so nobody gets transferred to some specific question and we're not saying any responses required. In which case, if somebody skipped one and they still don't live in the city of Dexter, you could have a question two that says, how long have you lived in the city of Dexter? You could have these questions and then you could still have a new bubble that says, I do not live in the city of Dexter, or you could add, you could rework, you could re-add options to improve from question one to number two, and if somebody doesn't answer one and still automatically gets question two, but they don't live in the city of Dexter. So I guess that's what I would advocate to, we are going to rely on programs to skip logic. I would just simplify the question wording to question two and then add the second and third option from question one down there. If that makes sense.
Uh, yeah.
You could also perhaps simplify question three where it says, do you receive a bill every other month from the city of Dexter? I don't know if this every other month thing is going to confuse people, they're going to be like, is it every other month or not? Like, it makes me think like, what is the frequency with which I receive the bills from the city? So you could just say, do you receive, um, like a water sewer refuse bill from the city of Dexter? Because I think that's more what you're getting at.
Why are we asking that?
That's just like a validation of, do they live in the city of Dexter? It sounds like that's something they've done in the past.
So, so, you know, the, the, the one of the first questions that we have to ask whenever we, we get a phone call is what is your address? Because we get calls from folks that live in the Towne Check who assume they live in the city of Dexter.
I live in Dexter.
And so one, one way of validating that is, do you get a bill from the city of Dexter? If no, then you're probably not, not a speed faster.
I have a.
Thus why Dan didn't follow the Dexter Chelsea road.
I have a couple of mods that, I mean, so the, the first question, yeah, I think I was thinking that it should be some logic built into it to, to lead to some question two or any other questions that we think that somebody who lives in Dexter should answer or somebody who does not should not answer. Um, the, the two options, uh, I think question one, the second and third option, I would say to still add them within that because some people might look at the first question and say, do you live in Dexter? And then if there is a yes or no, and there is nothing else, they might say, oh, well, this is not for me. So there are, but we might want to know opinion of people who frequently come to Dexter. Um, so that might be something I think we should keep with that. Um, I actually was thinking that the reason, I mean, do we want to have question three or not? Um, not necessarily because, because if, if people are answering question one the way it is, then it kind of answers the question for number three. And then if we are wanting to ask opinion of people who are under the age of eighteen or they are in a house where the water bill is not under their name or they live in Dexter, but they're, the bill is not part, you know, they're renting, for example, somebody else is paying the bill, would they confuse them that this is not for that again? Right, if we are, want to know people are living in Dexter or not, maybe the first question is going to cover that. Um, so to me, question three was potentially adding more issues and confusion to them actually answer, answering the question. Um, I have some other thoughts on other questions, I don't know if I should wait until we get to them or should I bring them?
No, please bring them up.
All right.
If you want to bring up, or if you need to provide, please.
Yeah.
A lot of those ideas, I, I think it's useful to just be succinct about it, bring, bring up your questions.
Sure.
Let's get through them.
Um, question nineteen, I wasn't sure if that's the best way of answer, but asking that question, um, which is, um, to what degree you favor or oppose the following potential priorities for the city of Dexter? There are a lot of good things, so I can see somebody just looking at them and say, oh, these are all, should be priorities for the vast majority of it. Um, to me, how do we ask that question to get more information out of people? Would be something similar to number twenty, right, that picking the priorities because all of these are a lot of good things and I can imagine somebody reading it and saying, oh, I would love my city to do all of these things. Um.
Yeah, and, and, and they're, they're, they're intentionally very similar and asking, asking a very similar question in two different ways.
Uh-huh.
So, I mean, we, we could just delete number nineteen and get a, get a different information, yeah.
Um, twenty-five, I know, um, that ping pong is coming up another, um, question, but also ping pong tables have been a topic of conversation um, for parks and generally all the parks and to which ones to be added or not added, or if it's a good idea or not. So maybe that's something that can be added to twenty-five.
Can you just answer that question? I want, I want to know what those ping pong tables are made of.
Concrete.
So they can't be moved, what's their purpose or that's that?
Ones that are.
They, 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 they can, but with construction equipment.
A great lot, a great deal, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're, you're not gonna have somebody go down there and drag it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then my last thing is, uh, for just consistency purposes, there were other questions that have agree, disagree, no opinion. I think like thirty, thirty-two should also be similar to have agree, disagree, and no opinion, because sometimes the people just, something does not apply to them for them to have an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys think we need questions twenty-one through twenty-four? I feel like I've answered those questions before on a survey from parks, maybe? And also I feel like those questions, if we're trying to cut down the number of questions, are questions that may be more appropriately placed in a parks survey.
Yeah, also a lot of those are directly out of the park master plan survey.
Yeah, so I thought I'd seen those before. And I just, if we're trying to trim it, I think those might be easy ones to pluck out of there.
Because we recently asked them.
Yeah, and because yeah, the other parks questions I think are more related to issues we're currently dealing with and, you know, things that we don't have feedback on yet.
Do we wanna add anything about parks in case people have not seen the other?
Well, there are still questions about the parks. That's not all the questions. That's just like the basics, like do you use the parks? And
Yeah, to do twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are also parks questions.
Sorry, I misheard the, the last number. Sorry.
I think this is a good, good first cut, and I, I guess, um, goes wrong about, I think I should be in there, or, Zach?
Oh, I'll put it on page one thirty-nine.
One thirty-nine.
So quick, somebody tell me how much you should pay for one of those trans-country semi-trucks. What would you be willing to pay for one of those? Nobody here knows because we've never bought it. So the question of asking someone, what do you wanna pay for a fire station? I wanna pay nothing for a fire station. It doesn't mean anything for folks who haven't done it. It is intended to be the measure of, yeah, people wanna pay five minutes for this. No one's gonna ever wanna do that. People wanna pay the least possible. So I think asking that.
I'm willing to pay up to, maybe without.
The, the challenge is that very few people know what that translates to, what you're actually buying. How much is a new car nowadays? Yeah, someone who hasn't bought a car in ten years, still be fiberglass, the average car, new car is more than forty thousand.
He was heard yesterday that I have now, uh, six percent thousand dollars in the S.
Yeah.
When you were gonna buy it six months ago, what was it gonna buy it now? Doesn't mean relate.
Um, there, there are a couple of questions related to the houses where I would offer, this is based on my experience. Page one forty, what types of residential housing? Uh, somewhere to forty there, is that I would like to see, I find you get stronger results if you do support, strongly support that type of breaking thing. And often it does a lot better if you provide a description of it. So if you just ask, do you support affordable housing? People are gonna say, no, I don't want poor people living next to me. When you describe that the median income household indexers a hundred thousand, that means you're spending thirty thousand a year, which means you're spending fifteen hundred a month. That's affordable housing. That doesn't seem the same as someone who's spending three hundred. So just a quick, you know, one-third of household income or I don't know, that type of stuff, what I, uh, will trip folks up.
Uh, sorry, that's, that's, so for forty-one, you're thinking, um, fit, uh, strongly favor, favor, uh, suppose, strongly pose.
Yeah.
Yeah, questions forty, forty-one, I asked, would this city of Dexter be more just seems kinda weird to me, like, am I making assumptions about like what other people in Dexter like to? Seems like maybe like would I use more, would be a better?
Whatever I want.
Forty-eight, forty-one, maybe twenty.
Oh, I see. I've got it. They, all good. Well, they may not want anymore.
Yeah, I don't know. It just seemed weird to ask, like
He's saying the personalizer.
Cause I'm trying to make an assumption about what other people in Dexter would want more of.
He, what he's saying, is he's saying what type of personal development would I use more of?
Yeah.
You as the surveyor, you know, take your, check what's your personal preference, it's not what you said to Dexter.
Yeah, I just think I love that. A lot of people probably show it up.
Yep, on page, uh, one forty-one, that might be the first set of questions on that we ask about satisfaction with services. We're not getting services as it relates to public enforcement, public works and trees. Talking about elections, I guess. So there's satisfaction questions about elections. And then I thought we, earlier we had questions about, uh, so page one thirty, it's a question thirty-three, have they been interacting with the sheriff's office and fire, uh, fire medical, which I like, I had proposed in my earlier set of questions. I'm trying to figure out how many times did it all residents have interacted with city staff? And then their satisfaction was asked. So there, I mean, that, that could be two separate questions, which is just how many, and I have that in the previous document since, for example, if it takes since January one, twenty twenty-one, we picked some reference period that would be in easy, easy to recall, I guess, for residents, how many times did it all interact with the city staff and their professional capacity? We could say zero, one to two, three to five, six to more. Overall, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the level of service that you receive? Or you could, you could ask that, in addition, you could say, generally speaking, how would you rate the following aspects of the service provided by the city department to have dealt with? And then you could have maybe a grid, what you're talking about courtesy professionalism, willingness to help, knowledge, timeliness. These were questions I pulled from somewhere else. Or an open end, you know, what went well with the service you received, what could have been done to improve it? And then I also had a set of questions that were about, uh, council. And so, well, well, one question is how confident are you in your local government? I don't know how relevant people think that is to our community. I think that's commonly asked in other surveys. So I guess, one area I would like to see questions is, uh, I guess interacting with city staff and potentially interacting with city council. I appreciate feedback in this format. I don't know if other people would be, it seems consistent with what we're doing with fire and police and waste and things like that. One area I would like to see questions.
Two things. Number forty-five, in the last twelve months, have you used the city's online waste wizard tool to search for how to appropriately dispose items? Again, if we're trying to trim questions, I'm asking honestly, is that feedback useful? To anyone?
Well, I mean, it's, it's kind of a leading question, right? It's, it's, have you used it, but also, hey, if, if you didn't know about.
Sure, I'm, sure, I get that. I'm just, which leads to my second thing.
I, I think it's lower priority.
Uh, but, but yeah, I'm just, again, trying to pick things that could possibly go. But that also leads to the second thing I wanna say, and this may be a wild idea. But have we thought at all about splitting this into two surveys and sort of doing it at time, like timely, like choosing the questions like based on a timeline of events? Like ask the election questions in a survey closer to the election or after the election, when people have just gone through the process? Or just look at it that way to try to split it up a little bit?
Yeah, I think there's, sorry.
No, 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 no.
I think that's a fair point, especially if we were originally thinking that this is gonna be a survey to help inform the budget and objectives process. So if there are questions that are more relevant to that, I can, I can see prioritizing those.
That, that's
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna not ever get this into, this other
No, no, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm just
Yeah, and, and I think that would be, I don't know, I in terms of like what my goals are, or what I think would be great for community engagement is more frequently reaching out to the public, and it wouldn't necessarily be one big thirty-minute survey, you know, once, every five years, if you set, you know, if it came two times a year, you, you have here your budget survey and here's your general survey. I think that would be great, and I think the more often you do it, I mean, you don't wanna, you know, have it lose meaning. But I think if there's a message that's being sent, the more people reach out to the public.
Well, right, and if it's like twenty-five questions as opposed to fifty, I'm gonna be much more likely to sit down and do that.
Yeah, I, I think that as a general level, and here's our restart. Um, I think as a general, I take on, I, I think we're very engaged with the citizens. I mean, when you think of all the different things that they learn about, that can learn about, whether they wanna attend all the different meetings on a multitude of topics. I, I read today that, uh, Governor Whitaker's better rename the Michigan Arts Council. Right. They're naming it more like arts and culture, more like our arts, culture, and heritage, they almost did this, it's more, much more similar. And how many years, Bob, that was the idea you brought to the floor, that we all jumped on your bandwagon with. You know, you know, ten years if we had that basically, okay? You know, there, there, there's so many different meetings, people come and speak up and voice their opinions. I mean, just the thoughts, the emails you just talked about today from the residents who live outside the city would know that they can reach out and ask us about a property or a process. I, I don't think our communication actually is dependent upon a survey. I, I view this as, I view this as, are there topics that we want to better inform ourselves on as we start trying to set our goals and priorities should come in here? And, you know, if we're concerned about like traffic, like Jamie, you thought of the numbers, things related to traffic. If traffic is one of the topics, then we ought to ask three, four questions on traffic. And see what comes back on traffic, if that's, we think that might be a fire item. And the ones about how are we doing? I mean, I don't think, I don't think that belongs in this at all.
I always feel like
Okay, if, if we're not doing it all, if they're working, we'll find out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, I gotta get a note.
So I'm gonna find out.
How's that with the staff?
Well, staff, I have no problem with asking a question about customer service. Okay, if, if you're, if you're concerned about it, or if you wanna learn about it, um, that, that could be measured. It's no different than some of the questions we raised in the fireplace. I agree with you on that one. But I think they should, I think we should try to think of my, we're doing this, we're trying to do this in the spring so that it could help us put that list together that we're very, we're gonna focus on, right? Or things we might wanna learn about or change. So then.
Yeah, I'm all for frequency of, uh, surveys. I am not in favor of multiple a year or two close of years for a couple reasons. Multiple of the year, it it becomes to a point that everybody's like, oh, I don't answer this one, I'll answer next one. And if we have ideas of making decisions based on input, then we might miss our opportunity. So if it's something that is you know, um, once a year or around the time, it's more useful for the act, things that we wanna take action on that year. I also am not in favor of surveys every year that have questions that we cannot take action, or the action we take is longer than a year. If it's something that we know, for example, it's about a road and we have to bid it out or wait for another Michigan grant a year or two down the road, and we keep asking that question, it's like, why aren't you fixing it? I already told you, this is you know, my opinion about it. So it really depends on, there is a balance, I maybe that's what I wanna say, that there is a balance of how many we do, when we do it, and what questions are on those, um, surveys.
Justin, I, I don't think we need to ask, ask questions for the staff.
That's one, forty-seven?
Yeah. What's your voting frequency? I really, what, what's the, what's the goal of that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah.
We, we get a general sense of
We can find that out.
Most people vote, I mean, I, I get the other one.
It's public records.
The one down below, but I mean, if it's, that would be one I would ask.
That's public record, it's we'll find out.
I, one way you could use that, I mean, I agree, one way you could use it is you are looking to do a particular analysis of the data based on like community, like civic engagement or something like that. So you could characterize respondents, you could differentiate among responses.
You're doing it all the time, I think we're doing five.
Who vote all the time and ones who don't.
You don't have to focus on your methods.
That being said, uh, there are issues with that to people about voting frequency because it's, it's not greatly remembered necessarily. So if we wanted to ask a question, which I'm in favor of not asking it, at least in this survey, I would have something to say about how to ask it and not ask it. Um, but that's how we could use is when analyzing the data to say, is this response coming from somebody who's very engaged in the community and is voting? I mean, that's a different type of person. This is somebody who's, you know, voting, uh, versus somebody who's not, who lives here and is not voting for whatever reason. And I think that's a meaningful way to look at the, the, uh, the data. But I'm fine removing it for now. Or, or any of them, maybe.
I, I, I flagged going down that, like, question forty-nine seems like it's towards your, your angle of certain, salary and service. That one does a good job of me evaluating our
We gotta step it up for about their, for about their, their staff. Michelle.
I, I think a lot of stuff, I, but I, I don't mind the service really.
What is our general timeline in this? I'm happy to, I mean, I think anybody should feel happy to like send some more like headline. I didn't, I know we're trying not to like get into the nitty gritty, but are you open to that sort of feedback? If so, what's, what do you get it to? What is our timeline? What do you think that steps are?
Yeah, so, um, I, my, my thought is bring a final draft back for city council's next meeting. And then release to the public.
Okay, so if in the meantime, between now and a week from today, we got you some comments or sooner to incorporate, we could fit that into a draft for our next meeting.
Okay. Good discussion. Thanks for your work on it. Not an easy thing to do. So thank you for doing this, and this has helped us get this far.
I, I, I think this did exactly what I was hoping it would, and willing it now, looking at questions differently.
Hey, council comments, we'll start with the two students. Yeah, let's do this up.
Hope you're sure you're able.
Thank you.
That one's for me, thank you.
Okay, Zach?
One of the things, I, I know we don't have weather for this year, but now that the, the at-won project's going in, as I drive down there, they don't have sign like that, they're linked next to something, so I'd like, let's see, start thinking about connecting it to a crossing, so we can one of the pieces of information I know around a little while ago, and maybe a year ago, uh, public safety building is the question of whether or not we have to divide space through the sheriff department. I know they have contract services with what's your township and Dexter township, and neither of them have space. That's, you know, an eight hundred thousand million dollar question. We don't have to, uh, do that. It's gonna be useful for us to get guidance from. Yeah, I just wanna say my no vote for this facility is because there is potentially two hundred sixty thousand dollar gap in what we have, and that's a lot of money to not know exactly where that's gonna come from. That's all.
Well, my comments, we went into that. I'm gonna say that my yes vote on that, um, was partially based on the fact that I think staff did a good job in presenting us options with, you know, flexibility on how to not go to the maximum on, on this and, um, you know, in terms of our bonded money. So I'm confident we can come up with a combination of things from those options to, to get it more in line with what we were expecting.
I think it's tough that we can come up with a combination of things from those options to, to get it more in line with what we were expecting.
Thank you. Oh, nothing to say, okay.
Yeah, when Dan said that, uh, our staff used to do all the work when we had main break or whatever, I'd like to tell you just very quickly what happened to me when our staff was doing this work. Um, we used to park out in the roadway, there were no driveways, so they're on the side of the road, so it was muddy, so there was, you know, lots of mud and muck. And it froze, and my, um, then we had a main break out in front of my house. My aunt came that night, and she had a polio, and she fell down and hurt her ankle. The next morning, Clarence Hanson had called out down, and wanted you guys to stop giving me special treatment, that's the thing. So that, do you remember?
Yeah.
Yeah. And goes a long way back, but it's the truth.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna say that it's a great to hear from the Avalon project, and it's very heartwarming and reassuring to hear all the upfront of support for them in this.
Further as well, uh, we're back around in non-arranged participation. Okay, anybody online, have their hands up, if you'd like to speak this evening? Let's see everybody. No, it's here, okay, I don't know over here. Thank you, Josh, I will seek commercials for German, that's it.
Now, who?
Goodbye Fisher.
Oh, thank you.
Second bye Griffin, all good, and.
Hi.
Hi. No. We're turned at nine twenty-nine fifty.
Yeah. Good night, everyone. Hi, what's up?